As we're waiting for some people to get online here, we're just gonna give it a couple more seconds. So we don't exclude anyone. I want everyone to be able to participate. It's about sixty of you that are calling in, so I'm just thinking of just a few more minutes if you don't mind. Just to make sure we get everyone. Apologize for being late. We did have some business at Ranlong. We started here shortly. So I'd like to welcome everyone to the Seneca Valley School District School Board Work Session of April twelfth, twenty twenty-one. At this time, I'm going to ask for a special helper to come up and gavel us into our meeting. So Felix, if you would come up, please. Three really good passes, please. Go ahead. Thank you very much. Yep. So that's half of the gavel. I'd like to call to order this meeting. At this time, I would ask that everyone join me in a moment of silence in memory of the lives lost due to COVID nineteen and reflection of those who are mourning loved ones recovering from the illness or have been negatively impacted during this time. Thank you very much. And at this time, I'll ask Ms. Andresi to come up for the Pledge Allegiance on I Let the Pledge.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. You briefly met our I Let the Pledge student for this evening, but I'm gonna ask them to come back to the microphone. Let's welcome Felix Aravalo. Felix. Felix is the son of Luisa and Gerardo of Evans City. He's also joined tonight by his aunt Sunita. Felix was nominated this evening by Evans City Elementary School Staff and Administration. In fact, I'd like to welcome and thank Andrew Teddy, our Assistant Principal, for being here this evening. I would also like to thank Ms. Ashley Solomon, who is standing with Felix this evening. She is his English as a Second Language teacher from AIU three, and she's joining us tonight in support of Felix. I appreciate you being here this evening. And then, as a side note, I'd also like to thank Naya Rondon for assisting me with translation and communication with the family this evening. You will meet Alejandro a little bit later, her son, with some exciting sports news. So Felix, before we do complete the pledge this evening, I wanted to share a little bit about you with our school board members. So could you share with us, you have two siblings? Three? Three siblings. Can you tell the board the names of your siblings?
Gerardo, John, and Emerson.
Gerardo, Emerson, and Jonathan. Very good. And he tells us that his favorite subject here in school is math. And then he has a very important profession that he wants to be a part of when he gets older. Do you want to tell them what you want to be when you grow up?
A firefighter.
A firefighter, a very important profession. Okay, so at this time, Felix, we're gonna say the pledge. Before we do that, though, I'd like to ask everybody here and at home, if you are able to stand and join us and say the Pledge of Allegiance. So Felix, when you are ready, go ahead and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the nice state of America. Republic, which is shining one nation under God, and the visible liberty and justice for all.
Outstanding. Great job, Felix. As you can see, Felix received his I Let the Pledge t-shirt and his medal and his swag bag of Seneca goodies. And we took some pictures prior to the start of the meeting, so I want to thank the whole family for being here this evening and coming out. And Felix, great job. You practiced very hard for that, so great job. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. At this time, we would have our roll call, so please hit me on the roll, please.
Ms. Bradel, here. Mr. DiTulio?
Here.
Ms. Harrison, here. Mr. Hester?
Here.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Nickel?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Ms. Whittle?
Here.
Mr. Widowson.
Thank you very much. We'll start our meeting with our information reports, and I'll call Ms. Andresi back up to the podium, please.
Thank you again, Mr. President. So our first item of recognition is our Seneca Valley All-Star Club Member Award. And if you recall, last month, we introduced this as a new recognition program for our staff. Yes, the All-Star Club was developed to officially recognize and show our appreciation to Seneca Valley Classified Employees, so that secretaries, paraprofessionals, maintenance, cafeteria, as well as our bus drivers, who are often the unsung heroes of our schools. This month, we are pleased to announce our Seneca Valley All-Star Club Member winner is Michelle Eppinger, a special education job coach, paraprofessional at the Seneca Valley Senior High School. And to recognize Ms. Eppinger, I would like to call the person who nominated her for the award, Ms. Amanda Mallon, Seneca Valley Senior High School Assistant Principal. Ms. Mallon?
Thank you. Job coach Michelle Eppinger goes above and beyond to help students daily, not just the students she services, but any and every student she encounters. Every time I talk with Michelle, the conversation is centered around ways to help people. She continuously brings to my attention the specific needs of students and families and offers a suggestion of how she can help, how we can help. She so genuinely cares for students. This past weekend, she assisted with food and clothing needs to a student's home, something that she does regularly. A few months ago, Michelle came to me with the grave concern that there are students who have additional needs that are not being met due to the pandemic. I am here tonight to honor the efforts Michelle has made in the creation, organization, and implementation of the Hygiene Helpers Program. Michelle has led the senior high staff in collecting donations for this incredible program that she created. She spoke at our staff meeting to share the why behind the collection. She creates packages and delivers them to students' homes, but also customizes personal packages based on student requests for items through a QR code. Care baskets have been placed at ten discreet locations at the senior high, so students can collect any item that they may need throughout the school day without anyone noticing. She checks inventory to be sure they are always fully stocked and continues to take donations and updates our staff with the progress to date. Within just a few months, she has shared all that she has created at the senior high and continues to communicate across the entire secondary campus so that we can service all students, grade seven through twelve. This partnership with the IHS and RGMS ensures that we can take care of every student's need request. Her passion to help others is not only contagious, but deserves recognition. And I am honored to be here tonight to award Michelle Eppinger into the SB All-Star Club. Thank you, Michelle, for your inspiration and your leadership. Can you please come to the mic?
Thank you. I just have a few words. And I just wanted to say it has been my honor and privilege to work with the students and the staff and the administration of this district. They truly touch my heart every day, and I will continue to do whatever I can to help out. And with the administrators, like Amanda Mallon, who backs my ideas or lets me bounce them off of her, and Mr. Miller over the years for the programs and things that he's helped out with, it's just, it's a great place to be. So thank you again for this honor. I really appreciate it.
Don't go away just yet. I'm gonna open it up to the board members if anyone else has a comment or... Just to make sure, hold on.
Don't leave us yet.
Yep.
They embarrass kids, so they're going to embarrass you. You might as well come back. Ms. Eppinger, if you could come back to the mic, we have some things to say to you.
It's more fun this way when we... It's not just about the recognition, but it's really being able to, for us to personally say thank you. Being a paraprofessional is hard enough, and working with our special needs students, there's nothing more sacred to me than helping those that can't help themselves. And the fact that you do that day in and day out is amazing. And going above and beyond to make sure that, especially during a pandemic, there's other needs that you saw, you didn't have to do that. You were never asked to do that. The fact that you're bringing that to make not only the school better and more welcoming place, but you know, those kids that really need those things, this program that's more discreet for those kids, especially in the senior and intermediate high schools, when we know what kids are like at that age. It really means a lot that you understand those kids. And I take it, you know, it is a true testament to the greatness of the people here. And you're perfect for this award because of that. So I want to thank you personally from the bottom of my heart for what you do. So I just had to call you a backup, not necessarily to embarrass you, but to make sure you really understood we do care about that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other board member? Oh, Mr. Peterson?
Well, I just think it's amazing that you found this void in all the giving that's occurred during the pandemic. I can't say what a wonderful thing this is you're doing. And that, you know, it's, I mean, we do it. It's easy to throw a can of corn, a box of spaghetti, and some peanut butter in a bag and leave it on the porch and just not think about it again. You obviously think about this every day. And the fact that you've sort of drilled this down to the buy the kid level, buy the student level, is just a marvelous thing. Thank you so much for making Seneca a good place.
Ms. Bradel?
Just again, I thank you, to you, for everything that you do, going above and beyond. But I would like to personally be involved, so if you could get the information to Ms. Mizlin and she could forward it to us, I would like, and I think many of the other board members would like to donate as well and be part of this.
Absolutely.
So thank you. I wasn't aware of it, and it's just wonderful.
Any other board members? Dr. Vitale?
So I will embarrass you a little bit.
Thanks.
Maybe, maybe not, because I know Michelle, she might be hard to embarrass, but I want to say that, you know, Ms. Eppinger has been here a long time. And every year, she does her job with the utmost integrity. Every position in this district is important to kids, and so thank you. But also, Michelle is everywhere. You know, if you've ever seen the movie The Incredibles, I swear she's part of that family. She really is. I walk outside, Michelle's there. I walk in a classroom, and she's there. I think, how did she get there so quick? I walk down the hall, she's there. She's in the senior high. She's in the intermediate high school. So Michelle not only works hard, she can move, she moves fast. She's everywhere. And so because she's everywhere and visible to our children, she knows what they need. Thank you, Michelle. I appreciate all of your hard work and all of your going above and beyond every year in this district. Thank you.
And I know it's not about the award, but I did want to let you know that prior to tonight's meeting, I did present Ms. Eppinger with her Star Award and some Seneca swag as well. So thank you again. At this time, Mr. President, Ms. Lewis, Ms. Heather Lewis, our Athletic and Activities Director, has a winter sports update for all of you. Ms. Lewis?
Thanks, Ms. Andresi. We had a, just an absolutely fantastic winter season. And before I start with our guests here this evening, I just want to thank the school board and the administration. Without your support and the value that you place on extracurriculars, the opportunities that these young people experience would not have happened. So as the Director of Athletics and Activities, I'm grateful for the support and the endorsement that we were allowed to provide these students with the experiences that they had. We have a number of state medalists here this afternoon, this evening, and I'm gonna start first with our boys' swimming team, who fell 1.5 point shy of winning a Whipple title. I'm not sure it gets any closer than 1.5 points, but I think when I introduce the five young men in the audience tonight, who are all underclassmen, not to put any pressure on them, but I think they've set the goal already themselves that that 1.5 points will be erased next year, and they'll look to bring home a trophy to the district. Our boys and girls swimming and diving programs are led by head coach Brian Blackwell and assistants Jeff Gavin and Lisa Wilson, who are in attendance tonight. For our athletes, Gavin Blazer, a sophomore, a two-time state medalist and part of a school-record 200 free relay and a state runner-up in the 400 free relay, a Whipple champion in the school record. Kevin Donaldson, a junior, part of the school record in fourth-place state medalist in the 200 free relay, PIAA runner-up, Whipple champion, and school record in the 400 free relay. Zach Losowski, a junior, part of the 400 free PIAA runner-up, Whipple champion, and school record holder. Daniel Simoes, a junior, 200 individual medley, PIAA runner-up, Whipple champion, school record holder in the 200 IM. PIAA runner-up and school record holder in the 100 free, part of the fourth-place state medalist in school record 200 free relay, and a PIAA Whipple champion in school record in the 400 free. So four-time state medalist this past winter. Hai Han Shu, a sophomore, seventh-place medalist in 100 breast, school record holder, 200 free relay, PIAA fourth place, and school record holder. I look forward to watching these five young men and the rest of their teammates return next year because I know without a doubt that the motivation and the desire to not only be a Whipple champion, but a state champion next year is there. So very proud of you, gentlemen, and congratulations on a fantastic winter season. On our girls' side, Seneca Valley was the only school that went to the Whipple Championships and came home with two trophies. They were also the Whipple runner-ups. And we're proud of all the efforts that these poor young women have given us over the course of the year. Again, led by Brian Blackwell, Jeff Gavin, and Lisa Wilson. Kendall Craig, who will be going to the Akron University to compete collegiately in swimming next year, 200 medley relay, fifth-place finish, and school record holder. Rhea Dietz, a junior, PIAA fifth-place finish and school record holder in the 200 medley relay. Perry Gagasus, a sophomore, part of the 200 medley relay, fifth-place medalist and school record holder, and sixth-place finish in the 500 free. And Edie Sawyer, an Ohio University recruit, who placed fifth in the 200 medley relay and school record holder, and is also the Whipple champion and school record holder in the 100 breast stroke. Congratulations, ladies, and to our graduating seniors, Kendall and Edie. Good luck, and I know you'll play each other in the pool as you compete against each other in the mat. And our final winter team is our wrestling program. For the third consecutive year, brought home the runner-up trophy and the Whipple team championships. And had it not been for COVID, which reduced the state team bracket to only the Whipple winner, we might be looking at maybe the second-best team in the state of Pennsylvania right here. They won their fourth consecutive section title. They have been led by head coach Kevin Wildridge and coach Joe Monobono, who are in the audience tonight. We have three state medalists, starting with sophomore Tyler Chapel, third-place finisher, also a Whipple champion. And Flow Wrestling right now currently ranks Tyler nationally as the number eleven in the country at the 106-pound weight class. Dylan Chapel, who will be going to Bucknell University next year to wrestle, is a three-time PIAA state runner-up. He's a Whipple champion three times. He's a career record holder for pins with seventy-five. And Flow Wrestling currently ranks Dylan as nationally number eighteen in his 132-pound weight class. And Alejandro Herrera Rondon, University of Oklahoma recruit, who was our three-time state champion, as he went undefeated this year at thirty-nine and oh, and won the 152-pound title, was named the outstanding wrestler at the PIAA AAA Championships, holds a career record for wins at 175. And Flow Wrestling ranks Alejandro as number one in his weight class in the country at 152 pounds. Congratulations to Dylan and Alejandro. We'll be watching as you continue your career, and absolutely thank you for everything that you've given this program. We've watched you since freshmen have come all the way through, and it's been a privilege and an honor. And I know your leadership will be left here with Tyler to carry it on. So thank you and congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. I will open it up to the board. Mr. Nickel, you look like you're ready to go first.
Yeah, it's tough to comment on this because, I mean, it's just, wow. I mean, it's just amazing to see our student athletes. But if I take it back a step, and I'll comment, this is the most people we've had in this room in more than a year, and it's great to see all of you. I'm guessing there are a lot of parents in the room, and so, I mean, this starts with with these great student athletes, these young men and young women who are representatives of our district, they're ambassadors for Seneca Valley. Mom and dad, it's you getting them up and getting them to practices, it's getting them in pools, it's getting them on diving boards. It's just being mom and dad and having that, you know, tough balance between you're a parent and a friend and sort of getting them into the athletics they're in, you know, keeping their grades up and making them the fine human beings they are. So thank you for that. We've got some of our coaching staff here. I just, you know, again, I know the role that you play in taking these young men and women from where they started as freshmen and then how they progress as sophomores and juniors and seniors and representatives of our organization, this district, as they move on to the University of Oklahoma, or I gotta give a little Ray Buttonell shout-out because I'm a Buttonell alum. So, you know, to Buttonell University, it's just, it's just amazing. And I've been on this board for nine or ten years now, and we've seen so many wonderful student athletes. And I know that you're out there in the community, you are ambassadors for our district. And I can say, and there are all the great people who'll chime in, but it makes me so incredibly proud to be, you know, one of the board members for this district when I know that there are young men and women like you who are not only exceeding and excelling at your sport, but doing it with that fine, upstanding, you know, classy way of being out there and a representative for our district. So I just thank you so much, and I'm so thrilled to see all of you here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Any other board members? Ms. Bradel?
Thank you, Mr. DiTulio. First of all, I would personally like to congratulate all of you, swimmers and wrestlers. You both had a commendable performance in the PIAA State Meet. As a parent of past SB student athletes, I know firsthand your dedication and commitment and time management skills. Your accomplishments this year are truly exceptional in spite of the limitations placed on you by the pandemic. Somehow, when training was halted, you find, you found a way to stay safe and to continue your practices. And I commend you for that, and also to maintain your academics. Many of you I have known personally and have watched over the years, and I have seen your athleticism grow and your leadership skills. And I am so proud of you and where you have come from when you were just eight years old. And I'm sure you have even further accomplishments to achieve as you head towards your collegiate careers or college careers. I also would be remiss if I did not extend a thank you, a huge thank you to Ms. Lewis and Mr. Furman, the coaches, the parents, for all your support and nurturing of our athletes and Seneca Valley athletics. We all know that the skills that we develop in sports carries us through life. I'm so sorry about this mask. It just keeps going all over the place. Thank you again for making a difference, all of you, your extra efforts, your adherence to the protocols. They weren't easy to deal with, but you made it work. And again, I appreciate another successful winter season. Last year was cut short, and I think this year we really reveled in it. So again, thank you to everybody, and congratulations, the best to all of you. And to the underclassmen, I'm sure we will see you back next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradel. Ms. Whittle?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know where to start. Like Mr. Nickel said, it is so nice to see you people, everybody in here. It's been a lonely visits and Zooming board meetings, so thank you for attending. This is an important evening. I'm just so thrilled, all these medals and accolades that you have accomplished. But the fact that you had a slice of normalcy in this crazy time warms my heart. And that you are able to take these experiences, wearing the hardware that you're wearing around your neck, the awards you won, WPIL-wise, school records, state, it doesn't get boring. And these are legacies that you're gonna carry on for the rest of your life. You're gonna talk about this and hopefully feel the pride. We, when you become our ages, it carries through, just like Ms. Bradel said, that's something that's gonna carry you through life. I want to thank your parents. They've probably been driving you around and feeding you and pulling you and pushing you since you were children, young, young children. Some of you young men, when you walked in here four years ago, just, we knew we'd see you back here year after year after year. Ms. Lewis and Mr. Furman, please, thank you for all the hard work behind the scenes. You're not only dealing with getting transportation, scheduling gyms, managing parents from out of, you know, out of the district that can't come. There is a lot involved, things that we have no idea. And please, thank you so much for traveling and supporting these teams the way that you and Mr. Furman. Thank you. That is just, it just makes our district the best district, you know, the great district that we are. And this is the most athletes, I think, Ms. Lewis comes and presents to the board after every season. And this is the most athletes, I think, I've been seven years, that she's been able to march, march in here with pride. So thank you. Look forward to seeing you graduates, a graduation this May. And I'm sure we'll see the underclassmen and the coaches in the following years.
Thank you, Ms. Whittle. Anyone on the stage? I got my neck. Anyone? Hearing and seeing none. Dr. Vitale?
I do want to say you don't typically talk to the superintendent, and that's not always a bad thing. But I want you to know that COVID offered me the opportunity to see more of your competitions this year, and I could not be more proud. I want to start by saying that all of our winter sports are tough, but man, wrestling and swimming, I'm a little prejudiced. They're some of the toughest. And to see so many of you excel at these really tough sports where, at the end of the day, yes, it's a team, but it's only you on the mat and only you in the pool. And so these are really tough winter sports. And of all of our seasons, some of the toughest sports that required resiliency, especially in a pandemic year, discipline, and integrity. And there were several times that I saw that throughout the winter season that I was just so proud to say, I work there. And I did attend an in-person swim meet, and I, at one point, I saw an individual who I thought for a moment, he looked so mature, I thought, did we hire another assistant coach? So it kind of flashed in my mind that this might be an assistant coach who was leading his team off to the side to warm up. And he said to the team, whoa, whoa, you guys are too close, let's spread out. He was really controlling the team. I later learned he was one of the captains. And I thought, wow, that's a student. Talk about the maturity that we see on our swim team and on our wrestling teams. And when I look at the seniors and I think about the girls that are graduating from our swim team and the seniors that we're going to lose, you know, it's bittersweet for me because we have been watching you, whether you know it or not, for a long time, and we're just so proud. We're sad to lose some of our seniors. The discipline and integrity that I saw from all of these teams and the amount that it took this year especially, I know you don't take that lightly, and you will carry that. At another time, my husband came racing into the house to tell me I had to hurry up and turn on the TV to see one of our wrestlers. He just couldn't believe what he kept seeing over and over and over. And I said, I'm not surprised. You think that kid is good on the mat? He's good at school. He's good at being a good kid. I know you're not kids. But you are such good role models for other students in our buildings. You may think no one sees you, but I know you by name, and so many of us know you by name because of your integrity in the halls. I'm proud of you. Thank you. And for those seniors, I am sad that you're leaving, but you're not gone yet. We'll see you a little bit longer. Underclassmen, you have what it takes. Watch these seniors. We're losing a really good group of winter athletes. Thank you for making us proud.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. I'll just throw them, you know, close. I'll just throw, you know, closing comments and and, you know, some of the parents out there I've known. I won't say necessarily 35 years, but it's been 35 years or more I've known some of your parents and walked the halls of the school with them. It's amazing to see that legacy now being passed on, the families that are involved in in our athletics and our academics. To be able to, you know, open the pool this year and at least get new swimmers and divers into that pool. Granted, it wasn't the whole season, but at least you got in there. That that made us feel so good that even through the pandemic, we were able to do that. It was a little bit for you seniors, you know, a little more normalcy. I hope you appreciate it as much as we enjoyed watching you enjoy it. It made it very special. Your coaches, Ms. Lewis, were integral to making sure that we could get that done. It was fun to see. As far as the the wrestlers, I, you know, heck, I think I saw some of you guys wrestle for the first time when you were eight years old. So it's great to see you here, Alejandro. I don't know what else to say, but, you know, congratulations. You really put Seneca Valley on not just the local map or the state map, but the national map with your abilities. And we're going to miss you here in the program. It's amazing to see what you folks do, not just as student athletes, but what you do as students. The athletic part is incredible. This Dr. Vitale point, she won't call you kids, but I will because it's not an insult. It's amazing to see the kids like you are out there being role models. That there's other students in all these buildings that know who you are, not just from, you know, your athletic abilities, but because you are fine people and you help. And you're not, you know, that stereotypical bully jock. You know, you're good, honest people and going through life, keep that up, pass it on. You know, it is contagious and we do appreciate it. And you make it so easy to sit up here and say, yes, these are our students. This is what we are able to produce here. You do the hard work, we just get to take credit for it. So I want to thank you all for that and thank your parents for everything that they've done as well. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, under student staff recognition, we have four items this evening. Senior Sophia Kunkel was recently recognized as a gold key winner in the 2021 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards for the Northeast Region. Ms. Kunkel won in the novel category, writing category, for the prologue and first chapter of her book, Starless Skies and Broken Dreams. Additionally, Julia Lingenfelter, a junior, was awarded two honorable mentions for her personal essay and memoir, The Apple Tree, and for her poetry titled, Julia. The Scholastic Art and Writing Awards are the nation's longest-running, most prestigious educational initiative supporting student achievement in the visual and literary arts. And in your backup, there is additional information for you. Our second item, Claire Reynolds, a Seneca Valley senior, was recently announced as a gold key winner in the 2021 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards for the Pittsburgh Regional Competition. Ms. Reynolds won for her piece titled, Come Through the Chaos. Seneca Valley's silver key recipients included seniors Connor Campbell, Tess Enders, Jocelyn McDanny, and Emily Newman. Additionally, more than a dozen honorable mentions were handed out to SV students and all were recognized during a virtual ceremony held last month. Again, more information is in your backup. Our third item, Mimi Sworonsky, a Rowan Elementary School fourth grader, recently applied for and was chosen to appear in Inside Moves, a national TV commercial filmed by Dick's Sporting Goods that celebrates women leaders. Ms. Sworonsky, who is a football player with the Seneca Valley Junior Football Team, is seen several times throughout the commercial with her male teammates. But that is not all she does. Ms. Sworonsky shared with us that she is also a devoted wrestler who recently took several first-place awards at a regional wrestling competition that led her to compete in the girls' wrestling state championships earlier this month. And I will tell you, Mimi is going to be featured on Saturday evening at 7:30 on KDKA TV during their weekly show called Fan Nation. So if you remember or can tape that, be sure to tune in again Saturday night at 7:30. Our fourth item, Junior Mira Rathfod, was recently accepted into the 2021 Pittsburgh FBI Pittsburgh Teen Academy. As a selected participant, Ms. Rathfod will be gain will gain a better understanding of the FBI and what it takes to keep America safe, highlighting the various positions and career paths that work together to help them in their mission to uphold the US Constitution. Ms. Rathfod will be offered insight into a number of topics and specialties, including the importance of making good choices when using online communication platforms, understanding which federal law violations the FBI investigates, requirements of all FBI applicants, and the FBI's domestic and international roles. We congratulate Mira. Under dates to remember, today starts Ramadan. April 17th, we will be holding an ACT testing date here in the senior high school at 7:30 AM. April 19th, we will be returning for the regular school board meeting that'll be held here at 7 PM as well as on Zoom at 7 PM. And on April 22nd, that is Earth Day. And that is all I have for now, Mr. President, unless you all have some questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Andrews? Hearing none. Thank you very much. We'll move on. We do have a student presentation, and I'm assuming Dr. McKinley, if you want to take the introduction from here, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. DiTellio, and and good evening to everybody. I'm I'm happy to introduce a group of staff and students who've been working very diligently. They've been reviewing past and recent history in an effort to bring you the latest, most accurate information regarding the Seneca Valley mascot. The staff who've been involved with this presentation include Ms. Malika Christopher, Ms. Lisa Graham, Ms. Heather Lewis, and Mr. Dan Guerra. Mr. Guerra will be introducing the students and setting up the presentation, so I'll turn it over to him now. Mr. Guerra?
Thank you, Dr. McKinley. Good evening. My name is Dan Guerra, and I'm one of the assistant principals of the Seneca Valley intermediate high schools. I'm here tonight to introduce our student speakers, Benifer Sapai, Avani Solanki, Gargi Ranae, Zach Donaldson, Claire McCafferty, and Vivian Palmer. Each of these students have a unique story that has led them to explore the history and nature of the Raider name and mascot. However, interwoven amongst those stories is a common thread, their Seneca Valley education. Our learning-centered culture at SV has challenged these students to engage with the complex, ask deep questions, and share their findings now with their community. They've put forth a significant amount of effort and thought into this ungraded involuntary project. Now, without setting the bar too high, I'd like to turn over the presentation to our students as they invite you to listen to their learning, beginning with our first speaker, Benifer Sapai.
Good afternoon, board members, or evening, I should say, sorry, it's not afternoon. As we begin moving into this portion of the agenda, we thank you for your time and your willingness to hear us out. We are here today to speak to you regarding the topic of retiring our school mascot, the Raiders. We have researched profusely this topic, and seeing that we are well-educated in this topic, we have had no other choice but to come to the conclusion that this issue must be addressed. We feel that it is our duty as proud Seneca Valley students to do this, considering that we are proud of our past and yet committed to our future. We will now begin the PowerPoint presentation, so let's put that up. Thank you very much, and we can click to the beginning of this. All right, so here we are, retiring the Raider name and mascot, and we can begin. Next slide, please. Thank you. Okay, so beginning with our overview, we have broken this presentation down into three parts so that it is easy to follow and very organized. Why does a change need to be made? We will go over our research, our consensus, and indigenous opposition, so words from indigenous peoples, a part of our culture, Seneca Valley's indelible tie to the negative connotation of Raider and its historical context. And finally, going forward, the trends of professional organizations, colleges, and high schools transitioning away from Native American mascots. I will now be passing it to Claire McCafferty.
Thank you, Benifer. If we could switch the slide, please. Okay, so today I'm going to be explaining to you the historical context of Native American mascots in the United States, but specifically in our school. But before I get to that, I wanted to just give a little bit of context of who I am and how I came to be here. So I've been a Seneca Valley student my entire life, and I, like many of you, have some very good memories with our Raider mascot. But as I've continued my research in my argument class and through this group, my eyes have been opened. And I'm extremely excited to share that knowledge with you today. So to begin, the term mascot originated with the French opera from the 1880s, Le Mascot. It was a story about good luck charms, and when this migrated to America, the term mascot made its way into everyday vernacular through professional baseball teams who focused their superstition on mentally and physically disabled people by using them as the butt of their joke. And so Native American mascots began to be integrated into this, not only because of the prejudice that existed toward them at the rise of the 20th century, but also because of the effects of the Sioux War, which reinforced assimilation efforts and sped up the process to erase and dehumanize Native American culture. Now, to do this, Native American children were plucked from their families and sent to residential schools under an assimilation policy that's regarded by many as cultural genocide. Its motto was kill the Indian and save the man. And in these schools, students were prevented from speaking their languages in any facet. Their hair was forcibly cut short, and they were taught a state-sponsored religion course that forced Christianity onto them. And so we see this constant drive to dehumanize and to invalidate Native American culture. And this leaves rooms, it leaves room for inaccurate caricatures to be made in the form of mascots. Now, we all know that, most notably, Native American mascots are depicted as savages. But in our specific case, Raider is pointing to the common misconception that Native Americans are not self-sufficient, meaning that they would have, they would have to loot and steal and frankly raid other towns and tribes in order to survive. However, this couldn't be farther from the truth. Native Americans are the pinnacle of sustainability, learning how to effectively grow and harvest crops in accordance to their geographical location as well as their climate. They practice holistic medicine methods. And especially in the process of growing and harvesting their many crops, they seek to enrich the land that they grow on instead of depleting it of its natural resources so that they can continue to use it over and over again. So not only is this Raider mascot insensitive, it's just inaccurate. If we could move to the next slide, please. However, in 1961, when 35 to 40 students from Zillianopole High School and Evan City High School came together to decide the new name and mascot of their merger, the two were rivals. So choosing between their mascots, the Bears and the Rams respectively, was just not feasible. So the students then decided to look into the land, the history of our land. And to their surprise, they found rich connections to Native American tribes. Because of this historical discovery and also our school's geographical location, they settled on the name Seneca Valley and the Raider as our mascot to represent what they believed our native ties to be. Now, at the time of the choice, it was supported by a leader of the Seneca Nation Tribe, Chief Hanging Feather, who along with his family was present at the groundbreaking ceremony for the school in 1963. And while we discuss the issues with designating a Native American mascot, there's one crucial aspect that separates our 1961 choice from an ill-intentioned mockery, and that's duty. At the time of the groundbreaking ceremony, there was support from the Seneca Nation. And Chief Hanging Feather even blessed the land at the groundbreaking ceremony. Those students researched and made educated decisions based on realities at the time, along with a consensus from the Seneca people. They accepted a duty to respect the culture and the wishes of the people that they undeniably represent. Can we skip to the next slide, please? However, since then, sadly, our duty has seemed to wither away in some aspects. And we see disrespectful depictions of the Raider with little note, little to no consultation of the Seneca people. And we see these stereotypical depictions in things like yearbooks, as you see on the screen, and as things as recent as football games. And in 2000, the idea of changing the mascot was brought up. And the school board made a response in the form of a resolution, basically saying that if our portrayal of the mascot remained respectful, then it should stay. Now, with this 2000 resolution, it talks about discussions with students, faculty, administration, alumni, and taxpayer communities. But there's one group of people that are left out, the Seneca people. There was no investigation into the informal allegations of disrespect. There was no consultation of the Seneca Nation, and there was no regard for what they had to say. Our duty disappeared in that moment. And so today, we seek to bring that duty back that our fellow Seneca Valley students once held extremely important. We continue to accept our duty to the Seneca people by conducting that research and by talking to the Seneca people so that we can honor them in a way that they see best fit and by respecting the people that we undeniably represent. So that in the end, we can truly be proud of the duty that we displayed in the past, like in 1961 and in 1963, but also extremely committed to the duty that we continue to owe to the Seneca people in the future. Thank you, and I'll pass it back off to Benifer.
Thank you, Claire. We'll go to the next slide, please. Okay, so going move, we're moving forward with this presentation. We see here the definition of the Raider, and I'm going to be talking about the negative connotation of the word Raider. Let's take it out of the context of simply just Native Americanism and tying it to indigenous peoples. But let's just look at the word itself. A Raider is a person who attacks an enemy in the enemy's territory or a marauder. We proclaim the name Raider to be an honor and a source of pride for our district. But the definition is not one that paints indigenous Americans, let alone ourselves, as we claim to represent in a positive perspective. Next slide, please. So moving into the Seneca Nation's consensus. The Seneca Nation of Indians is the main organization that represents the Seneca people today. And if we look at their statement that they have put out in recent years, which is, you know, we looked at in 1961, when we first took the mascot into our hands, we looked at our duty to the Seneca Nation as Claire mentioned. But today, they don't agree with that statement. They say, "Seneca Nation views the use of Native American names, references, and imagery for the logos and mascots of schools and their sports teams as blatantly offensive to the Seneca Nation and has no place in a multicultural society that values diversity." The people we are honoring themselves have been very clear with their stance, and they do not want to be represented as Raiders or frankly, as any mascots. Moving on to the next slide, please. I'm going to get into now why I joined this or like this presentation. And the reason why is actually I did my graduation project on the Seneca Peoples. I had the idea back in my junior year, and I figured I would make it into a project. Regardless of whether or not it was going to be my graduation project, I would have done it anyways, out of the curiosity in my heart, I suppose. But I had the pleasure of talking to Dr. Joe Stallman as I reached out to him to get more information on the Seneca Peoples today, considering our school is named Seneca Valley. He is, he was appointed by the Seneca Nation of Indians president, Ricky L. Armstrong, senior, to assist with the issue in local school districts on their mascots and such. So he is very educated on these, and he has helped many schools as well. He is also the director of the Seneca Iroquois National Museum. So that is something that I talked to him about, and I know that many of you board members have also viewed my graduation project video. So that was an interesting thing, and I highly encourage you all to go back and reflect on that once this presentation is over. So that was an interesting thing, and I highly encourage you all to go back and reflect on that once this presentation is over. So going into some of the things, I had gotten a statement from him on specifically the name Raiders as our school mascot. He said, "It is not an honor at all, isn't, it is an insult, and you are using discriminatory techno- terminology." Why do you want to be called Raiders? Raiders are a bad thing, right? As I mentioned in my previous slide, the negative connotation of the word Raiders. They're pillagers. They go into places and destroy. And how can you honor us if you don't even know who we are? As Claire mentioned, our duty has disappeared. We have not continued educating ourselves as the students did back in 1961 on who the Seneca really are. Our duty has disappeared, and we need, we seek to bring that back or to get rid of the name Raiders as the Seneca Nation has made it clear they don't want us representing them. There is no honor of turning our culture into sports-related slogans, characterizations, and silly mascots. I will now be passing it to Avani Solanki, and we'll have us go to the next slide, please.
Hi, everybody. I'm Avani. I would just like to say a couple of sentences on how I got into this. I've been a proud Seneca Valley student for my entire life. I love Seneca Valley, of course. And I got into this topic last year through another student's bill, who Zach Donaldson's bill. He will be getting into this later. I am also part of Shout through the senior high school, and that is how I got into this project. I will be going into different opposition, opposition statements by different organizations that further show the consensus against having Native American mascots. First, we'll look at the National Congress of American Indians. They are the oldest, largest, and most representative American Indian organization serving interests of tribal governments and communities. I will not read the entire statement for the sake of time, but they agree with Seneca Nation. They do not want to be represented through sports brands and franchises and sports teams in any way. They believe that these caricatures and stereotypes are harmful, perpetuate negative stereotypes of America's first peoples, and contribute to a disregard for the personhood of Native peoples. Overall, they do not agree with having a mascot that is a Native American. Could you move on to the next slide, please? Lots of different universities and psychology departments also agree. The University of Michigan research shows that two-thirds of Native Americans who frequently engage in tribal and cultural practices take offense to Indigenous gestures, chants, mascots, and team names in sports. An assistant professor of psychology at UC Berkeley stated this. "The use of Native mascots and names has negative implications. It lowers the self-esteem of the community of Native peoples." Could you move on to the next slide, please? The American Psychological Association also agrees. In 2005, sixteen years ago, the APA called for the immediate retirement of all Native mascot symbols, images, and personalities by sports teams and organizations. Research has shown that the continued use of Native mascots has a negative effect on not only Indigenous students, but all students. They undermine educational experiences of all communities, again, not just of Indigenous students, but of all students. They, it establishes a hostile learning environment for Indigenous students. It undermines the ability of Native American nations to portray accurate or, accurate or respectful images of their culture, and it presents stereotypical images of Indigenous people. Overall, the research is very clear. Native mascots are not beneficial to Native people. For the next slide, we will be moving on to Zach Donaldson.
Thank you so much, Avani, and good evening, members of the board. I'll briefly mention how I became involved with this project as well. So I'm involved in a out-of-school club, but primarily consisting of Seneca youth students called Youth in Government. And I had first heard of this contentious issue really in a debate over our school's mascot there. At the time, I didn't understand what the fuss was about or what the issue was with how we represented the Seneca people. That debate opened my eyes, and I began conducting personal research and integrating, integrating it even into my lesson plans at Seneca. So I wrote a mock piece of legislation transitioning away from our Seneca mascot in my CHS argument class, and I also wrote a statewide level bill through the Youth of Government Program and presented that there. I can understand from an outsider's perspective, the confusion with this topic, but I believe there's a lot of salient information and points to be brought to the table when you conduct the research that shows us why we should transition away from this mascot. So we've established the psychological studies, the, the broad national consensus, and even the support of the Seneca people. But I think it's important we look at all of those things at the localized level and compare how Seneca's imagery shapes up. And before I begin moving into any of these slides, I think a salient point that needs to be addressed is that this is a place where thousands of people work, learn, and train for eight hours or more a day. This imagery becomes a part of our collective conscience and learning, and it's deeply ingrained in our culture and affects our understanding of this community, especially when there's an absence of really any broad Indigenous history course or information provided to us through the school. So I will now move into the first image. Thank you so much. And this is just, you're parking your car in Seneca Valley. These banners are seen quite, quite commonly throughout the outside of the school. And at first glance, you may not see anything wrong with this. However, the spear directly attributes a weapon of war, barbarism, or really not positive connotations and stereotypes to the people we're representing. Not only is it a negative connotation, but as Claire established, it's not one that's historically accurate. The Seneca have traditionally been a self-sufficient people and promoted peace. We need, if we're going to honor this group of people, we at least need to be historically accurate to begin with. I'll now move into the next slide. Secondly, the welcome mat of the opening office, this is the, the part of our school in a way where students are welcomed into the day, where many official business is taken care of. We see a sort of caricature of a Native American. Now, this is the official logo of the district. And again, at first glance, we may not see anything imminently offensive, but it, it characterizes a lot of typical stereotypes, cartoonish stereotypes we see about Native Americans, the war paint, the feather headdress, and then on the right again, we see the spearhead logo. We're good to move into the next one. So the next few slides are really establishing how ingrained this is in the day. The spear image here is just used as an arrow for a direction to class. That's subtext, and it's so, so quietly ingrained, but it doesn't go unnoticed. And I think that really contributes to our understanding of this community because it's this imagery that is the primary exposure we get, but it's not an accurate representation. We'll move into the next slide. I think this is again represented through the official mascot and how we celebrate our accomplishments as a school. And then this next final slide, opposing teams. So if there's a Native American student from another school, or just in general, other schools are also subjected to how we represent the Native American. And then the final slide is, I think personally, the most important. These are not officially approved by the district, but they are in our, our buildings, and I think that what's most important about this is it's indicative of our culture and how we view this group of people through this imagery. It's a caricature. It's widely cartooned, lampooned stereotypes of a culture that evokes that knowledge, our personal knowledge of them through this imagery, which is entirely inaccurate. They're goofy, and although we may not outright see them as offensive, they absolutely play a role in a misrepresentative, misrepresentative understanding we gain about this community. Now, something I do want to point out is that I'm sure as we went through these slides, some may not have found them offensive, and that's perfectly valid. But the APA study shows that regardless of how we utilize these mascots or how we portray them, it does reinforce a stereotype due to its abundance. Even ways that have been seen typically in culture to be representative of Native Americans in a positive light, those communities have had backlash against. I'll bring up the Pocahontas movie. I'm sure in a lot of cultural aspects, many see Pocah, the Pocahontas Disney movie as a good representation for young girls, but that was still a very controversial and misleading piece of information for the Native American community as a national piece of media. Previously, in this, this school board meeting, we mentioned that athletes and our students are liaisons, representatives of the district. If we garner these logos that many people recognize as offensive and accurate, if we're to be representatives of this community, I believe we have to do it in a light that is positive and widely accepted. Seneca has a commitment to being a global community, and regardless of how large our native population is, I think it's important we have accurate representation information for our students if we are to don these logos specifically because we have a direct cultural tie, a direct representative tie by being named Seneca Valley. I will now pass it off to Gargi Renee, who will be presenting on the consensus and trends moving away from these mascots in other professional organizations and schools.
Thank you, Zach. So as I mentioned, I am Gargi Renee, and I became a part of this presentation through Shout. I'm currently co-leader of their Public Relations Subcommittee, and I'm on their senior board with Benifer. So that means I'm pretty much running their Instagram and any other shout-related web pages. When I heard about this opportunity, I immediately thought about how this can go beyond simply reporting the movement, but rather becoming a part of starting that change. Additionally, I did not grow up in the Seneca Valley District or with the Raider name, so I know the feeling of hearing about Seneca's mascot and thinking, "People still use that kind of mascot?" Well, upon our research, we discovered that in Pennsylvania alone, sixty-four public school districts still have Native American mascots and names, according to the Pennsylvania Youth Congress. And although that number has dropped from the 2016 statistic of sixty-seven schools, Seneca Valley is still on that list today. Hence, it has come clear that we're not the only school who has been wanting or needing this change. So here's a list of schools in PA who have already been courageous enough to do so. First up, we have the Unionville High School, whose mascot has been the Indian in reference to the Leni Lenape Indians who occupy the Philadelphia area. They have voted unanimously to conduct a review of the mascot and logo and then vote on the issue in August 2020. Now, they are known as the Longhorns. And of course, we have Indiana University of Pennsylvania, or IUP, located in Pittsburgh, PA. And they have changed their mascot from the Indians in 1999, recognizing the issue with their mascot far before our times. There are three things a mascot must do. It must do no harm. It must tell a story about the community, and it must be a symbol for all community to rally around. This is a statement from a Rate Radnor school board, from a Radnor school member, and it is a statement that incloses a message we hope will stay with you if you're taking anything from this presentation. So if we move on to the next slide, we will see a timeline for Shady Side Academy, a private school located rather close to Seneca in Pittsburgh, PA. Now, they were formerly known as Blue and Gold when the school was first founded. However, in the 1940s, they ended up changing their symbol colors to the Indians. Various alumni have even attempted to retire that mascot. However, that movement was denied and ignored multiple times until recently in July 2020, when the Board of Trustees voted unanimously to retire the mascot and name, switching their current mascot to the Bulldogs. The reason for doing so, well, if you look to the next slide, we can see that they believed that a significant portion of their community felt that it was something they couldn't embrace. In fact, they believed that their name was dividing them instead of uniting them. Now, we can look upon Radnor School District in the next slide. So in two, 2013, Radnor released a statement saying goodbye to their mascot costume similar to Seneca Valley. Their nickname Radnor Raiders and logos such as the R in the circle with feathers and their signage at Pre-Vost Field, however, ended up staying. They believe that instilled pride and tradition in their students, a truly valid statement or argument at the time. But in September 2020, Radnor School Board voted to retire the Raider name, mascot, and/or associated Native American imagery from the Radnor School District to foster a fully inclusive community after listening to the extensive community and student comments on the topic. They included that they wanted the process to involve creating and establishing ways for their students to learn, reflecting upon their past in relation to the Raiders, and that their surrounding community and its history concerning Native Americans. Like Seneca, they are proud of their past, but they are committed to the future. One Radnor School Board member states on the next slide, "If you believe Raiders have been a tribute, and that the association was a positive one, I know that it is insincere feeling, and I'm sure that that's the feeling I had when I was a teenager at RHS in the 90s." But the standard of what we know is good and decent has changed, and we should recognize that. Our tradition isn't a mascot or an image or name. Our tradition is excellence and lifelong learning, and I want to move forward with that spirit. I know that this is a feeling that many Seneca Valley students and staff can relate to, the sense of pride in representing their mascot, but it's important that when representing a group of human beings, we are honoring them instead of disrespecting them. So on the next slide, we can see that we have a partial list of pro-sports that have originally had Indigenous mascots that have changed them in the past to a more respectful mascot. These are the types of teams that you might have heard in the national news, and for good reason. We really want to emphasize that we are not the only ones yearning change. We're standing alongside Washington's NFL and Dartmouth Football Team while the list goes on. Now, I will hand it off to Zach for our closing statement.
Great, and thank you so much, Gargi. I would like to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to speak today. I know that all of you this year have been incredibly busy delivering for the district through a particularly turbulent time with COVID. We are grateful for both your service and your prudent listening to student voices. A request I ask of those present today when continuing this process is this: to depersonalize the issue, to unattach whatever our own feelings about the Raider name may be, and to examine the evidence. Top academic studies, scores of consensus polling, and the very own tribe we are attempting to represent have all reached the same opinion. It's time to retire the mascot. Our team's extensive research has led us to the conclusion that the practice of Indigenous mascots can be deemed misrepresentative and harmful, and that this district and its culture have a tie to that misguided tradition. While I know it is with good intention, our district's continued use of the Raider mascot simply does not coincide with the times we live in. 1961 and 2021 are worlds apart. This decision was made preceding groundbreaking civil rights legislation for Native Americans and the heightened social awareness of the dead. Members of the board, this is a direction we are already moving in. Over the past decade, SV has slowly transitioned from the Seneca Warrior to block letters and painted over other existing murals in the school. This transition shows that we already recognize a problem with the way we represent the Seneca people. And I seriously question if it is truly better to remain in a limbo where we recognize the plight of our logos but continue to don them, or we do the right thing, the courageous thing, and follow through with our promise of acceptance and equality. I know this is a loaded topic. It's one standing right in the intersection of race and politics at a period of great turmoil in this country. However, today's topic is not a question of politics or culture wars, but simply one of humanity and decency. We have a sworn tribal affiliation here at Seneca, and the group of people we represent simply feel uncomfortable with how we represent them. That is a wish we should honor in accordance with the values of respect and morality that this school teaches us. Seneca Valley is a great place to be, and I know that no member of this district wants someone else to feel demeaned, unheard, or unwelcome. Today is by no means a diatribe or a lecture. We aren't coming to cancel the mascot and all associate with it or engage in a mud fight. I, along with many presenting today, actually once had great memories and positive feelings about this district's logo. Those feelings aren't evil. They aren't something to be ashamed of, and they aren't insincere. There's simply something we need to reexamine. We need to place our practices within the context of the times we live in and the information we've been provided and constantly push ourselves to do better. I'm proud to be from Seneca Valley. I've met incredible people here and found a warm, welcoming community that has supported me through my high school career. It is my hope that our district's logo can represent that kind and strong spirit. That is all we have for the presentation portion. We would be happy to turn it over to the board for any questions.
Thank you very much. I'll look around the board for any questions. Can't see if there's anyone up top. I will say that I want to thank you first for the presentation, the research, the, first of all, your presentation skills were amazing and very appreciated. It was better than some professionals I've seen present, to be honest. The, the research that you've done, the facts that you've given are again, you know, without question amazing. It's a lot to go through. It's a lot to think about. It's something that this board has, has been thinking about for quite some time now, you know, watching the senior project was, was very eye opening as well, and it's something that we're definitely going to be talking about more in the coming days. I would say that, you know, I think we need some more time to go back through this, to discuss it and look at ourselves and would hope that, you know, there, if we do have questions, we'll be able to come back to, to you folks and ask more questions where appropriate as well. I'm hoping to do that. Mr. Peterson has just signaled that he does have a question, so I'm gonna let him ask his question.
I would echo Mr. Trillo's comments. I think your argument was both well researched and compelling. The presentation was articulate and clear. I don't think there's anyone on the board that would take exception to your, your position. You know, I'm usually a person who is being told to back, back down a little bit. I'd like to jump into things maybe a little too quickly. But in this case, I'm going to ask your tolerance. We're, we're involved in a number of discussions here at Seneca Valley, as you probably know, around diversity and inclusion. And I see this as, as something that needs to be included in that, that, that stream, that discussion. So that we, we're sure that as an organization, as a large organization, we're taking these very important topics in the same direction. The one thing that I think is missing, although it seems obvious that you're encouraging us to think about change, but I don't see a recommendation for a mascot, a name, title or what have you that you think might be representative. And I would appreciate it if you could put your well-worn thinking caps back on again and perhaps come back to us with suggestions for what that change might be.
I would love to answer on that if I had the opportunity. So
Please, please.
The reason is we think that should be a community-wide decision. Us as a group of five students can't come up with the perfect replacement for the mascot, but we're encouraging you to really begin a thorough review process of this and look into what that new mascot could be. We would love to join in that effort. But the reason we weren't specific with the change is that I think it would be, we would be remiss to, to put something that we didn't think we had a lot of effort and intention to represent our school. But yeah, that's something that I think would come with the review process and come as a community-wide decision that we'd want more people involved with. So it was intentional that we did not have a recommended replacement for you.
Well put. Thank you.
Mr. Nickel has a question as well.
Well, it's not necessarily a question. You know, myself and Mr. Peterson have taken part in, you know, some of the discussions that have been held around diversity and equity and inclusion. I'll put Mr. Roberts on the spot for just a minute. He's been coordinating a lot of those efforts. Really just to speak to the mix of individuals that have been part of that conversation. I know that there's been members of the board. There's a broad constituency. Maybe you could speak, Dr. Robertson, to, you know, student representation just for a minute as part of this overall conversation.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So the community stakeholder group that we're working with right now is specifically parents, alumna and a few district staff, and we've kept it that way just because the pandemic has really limited our ability to pull more staff from classrooms and also knowing that students themselves have been limited in in-person instruction. So I think that you're right. There hasn't been student representation in that stakeholder group, in part also because they have been very successful with Shout this school year and the things that they're doing with Mr. Guera and the rest of the advisors. So they've been running on a parallel track, but there hasn't been a lot of cross-talk to this point.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions from board members? I cranked my neck. Apologize. I would also say, Zach, your, your answer to Mr. Peterson's question on why you didn't bring a recommendation was a very mature answer. And I'm very impressed with that as well. You know, you, you five, right, there's five of you, to not want to say, well, here's a recommendation. I would have thought if I was your age, I would have said, here's what it should be. So that's even more impressive. And as you saw, we talked about the student athletes. And you five are just as amazing. What you did in presenting this and I'm not going to say defending it, but answering the questions way that you did shows a level of maturity that is something we love to see from our students. So again, we want to thank you for, for bringing the presentation to us, answering the questions that we had and hopefully being part of this discussion as we move forward with this, you know, as a school district, as a district, as a whole and as a community at large. Dr. Vitale, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, when the students asked to present to the board, they had to go through various levels of presenting to all of us and they really did their homework. I'm just impressed, as I mentioned earlier about the student athletes, I feel the same way about these students. It's hard to believe they're students. They are mature, young adults. So you've given us a lot to think about. You've really done your homework. And so the board will take serious consideration, as will I. We have been involved in diversity, equity, inclusion discussions for many years, but now we will think more deeply about your proposal here. Thank you so much.
Thank you again, and if there's no other questions or comments from you folks, I guess we'll move on with our meeting unless Miss Andressi, you had something else?
Yes, I did, Mr. President. I have one more item that I wanted to share with all of you. Actually, in your backup, you will see an infographic that highlights the results of the community survey that we recently held for the Seneca Valley K-26 new building name. This survey was a culminating activity of our efforts over the past year to research and collect name suggestions for the new site that is planned for grand opening in the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The survey featured the top five names submitted by students and teachers from Revan City Elementary and Middle School, along with submissions from our school district staff. The district asked the community to rank these names based on their top three choices. Approximately two thousand six hundred and forty-six votes were cast. The point totals were calculated as three points for your first choice, two for your second and one for your third, with zero points assigned to the non-chosen schools. And the result, as you can see in that infographic, is first place went to Erman Crest with four thousand four hundred and thirteen votes or points. Second place was Wolf Creek with three thousand seven hundred and forty-eight points. Third place was Hilltop with three thousand twenty-three points. Fourth place was Oak Crest with two thousand eight hundred and fifty-five points and fifth place was Trailblazer with one thousand fifty-nine points. So our next step is to place this on the agenda for action next week, the April nineteenth school board meeting. I believe that's on page four of your agenda. And you will be asked at that time to select and approve a name for the new K-26 site. So I just wanted to kind of follow up and refresh your memories on that and answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? We can discuss this further in the agenda item when it comes up. But if there's any questions that you want to answer down, sure, Miss Andressi or the staff can take care of it. Hearing and seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll continue with our meeting as soon as I get to the right page of my computer. And we're going to go into agency reports. We'll start with the vote tech. Mr. Peterson or Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. President. The traffic's moving smoothly in the academic and administrative lanes at the vote tech and that report. All seven sending schools approved budget, so that's in the bag. As of March eighth, I believe, the school went back to five days like many of the others have, many of the sending schools have. And that seems to be going well. All staff requiring or desiring vaccinations received them from the Johnson and Johnson Supply, the single shot. And there had been a previous problem. I don't remember if we talked about it last month or not, but there had been a previous problem. Through a water analysis, there was some lead, some positive markers on lead and Legionella. And those mediation activities were undertaken. Things are retested and we're all back to normal now. So the next meeting will be May sixth, which will be the last before the end of the year.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Jacobs, is there anything you'd like to add?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none. I'll move on to the IU update. We did have our meeting. We are continuing and hopeful that we will have an agreement shortly with the Secretaries and Paraprofessional Group. Hopefully we'll, we'll get something done by our next meeting at the end of the month. We, we also were discussed and got a report on the vaccination clinic, I guess is the best way to put it. It occurred at the IU. I'll be honest, when, when it came out that the IU was going to be used as that central location and having driven up to Grove City and gone through the parking lot and the parking situation, I was very concerned. But it seems like they did a very fantastic job, is the only way I can put it, of getting those folks through. And being able to do that and there were four hundred doses of vaccine left at the end of, you know, getting everyone that wanted one vaccinated. So it didn't go to waste. They ended up finding another location for it. And then there's a follow-up clinic. If it hasn't happened already, it will be happening shortly up at IU six. That's the way they, they had all the IUs do it, then they took whatever was, whoever else wanted it after the fact and they moved around. So IU six up in Clarion is one of the closest ones around us that's going to be giving out the, the next wave of vaccine if those teachers didn't get it, wanted it. Other than that, we're moving forward with a possible convention in person. We're not really sure what's going to happen. One of the things we've been talking about is there were four open seats. If more than four candidates came through and they should have been in by the beginning of this month, if there's more than four candidates, we might have to do either a virtual or some type of in-person convention to elect only four seats. But right before the first of the month, we were down to, you know, still having one short of the requirement. So we're not sure exactly what's going to happen there. I'll keep you updated there as well. Are there any questions on the IU? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to the legislative report. I prepared a few things. Some things that have come up, I think, that are important is there was an amendment successfully inserted into a House bill. It's House Bill six oh five to provide limited protections for schools from frivolous or opportunistic lawsuits alleging exposure to the COVID nineteen virus. If you remember back in the fall, in November, Governor Wolf vetoed a bill that had liability protections in it. So this new bill is going to be temporary. It's a little bit watered down from what was out in November, but there's a temporary grant of immunity except in cases of gross negligence and willful misconduct. So this is going to the Senate. Hopefully you'll get some traction there just to provide some additional protections to the districts of the common law. The other thing, and we can talk about this a little bit if need be, is the Department of Health came out and DDE came out and changed the COVID restriction requirements to be more in line with what the CDC had put out, then those updates were effective as of today. So things are changing as we know. So that's a good thing. We're implementing where it makes sense and what makes, how will work best in our district. Two other items that I have is specifically related to my position on the Peasars Board. As you might have seen in the news, there's been news reports of miscalculations and an FBI investigation. A lot of these because they're lawsuits. I can't speak to a lot of the specifics. However, we did as a board, put out a couple of statements that I'd like to share with all of you. I think this is important for not only you as the board, but the rest of the community to know. In December of twenty twenty, the Peasars Board certified the employee rate contribution for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. The consultant who performed that calculation used to support his certification, he notified the board or they notified the board that the calculation contained an error. So we as a board are now investigating the circumstances regarding that calculation as well as any actions this Peasars staff took to provide information. And we'll then get the results of that and act accordingly. And also other news reports talk about an FBI investigation. Peasars has been served with grand jury subpoena for documents and we are cooperating fully with the request by the U.S. Attorney's Office in the Eastern District of Pennsylvania to protect the interest of its members. Outside counsel has been hired by the Board of Trustees to not only respond to the document subpoena, but conduct an investigation into the calculation of the shared risk and the basis of the subpoena. And Peasars is confident that if there are any issues identified, that the corrections required will be performed. I just wanted to get that out there. And as soon as I can provide more information, I definitely will. So if there's no questions about legislative updates or Mr. Nickel, and now if you had anything you wanted to add to legislative updates?
Well, there just is one other tidbit that I, I pulled up. You know, I had thought through that House Bill six oh five, the amendment, we'll see where that goes. I don't know per se whether these are, these are Senate bills that are already out there, but I know that there's Senate Bill five forty and Senate Bill five forty-two. You know, Mr. Miller, this will come near and dear to you. It's, it's about mapping funding for special ed to actual costs as opposed to, you know, something that isn't really actual as it relates to some of the charter schools and cyber charter schools that are out there. And then the second one, Senate Bill five forty-two is really looking to reflect the district's actual special ed population as percentage as opposed to just some by rote number. The interesting thing I thought about it was it's actually out there by Senator Tomlinson. He's a Republican who is from Bucks County. So perhaps, you know, with that kind of support from the other side of the aisle, there might be a little bit more traction for something like that in the future. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Nickel? Hearing, seeing none, we'll move on. Our next item is financial reports and in your backup, you will find the financial reports for operations, senior high activities, intermediate high activities, athletics, food service, tax collection reports and capital projects funds. If there's any questions, I'm sure you already addressed them with Miss Berger or you have this week to also address them. Next, we're going to go into a foundation update and Ms. Marzing will give that to us. So we wait for Annie to take the screen.
Okay, I'm here. Good evening, Mr. President and the entire board. Thanks for affording me some time to share a few of the great things happening with the Seneca Valley Foundation. I promise I'll keep it brief. We recently held a gift card drive, coined the Have a Heart campaign and asked for donations of gift cards to local restaurants, grocery stores and pharmacies to be given to families in need. Through the generosity of so many in our community, including members of this board, we raised almost four thousand dollars in gift cards that were then connected with struggling families within our district. I just wanted to sincerely thank everyone who donated. The response was overwhelming and the families helped. We're extremely grateful. This project will continue for as long as there's a need. So anyone interested in donating is still welcome to do so. I am very excited to announce that the foundation has four new trustees on our board. They include Dr. Jeff Roberts, here with us tonight, the District Director of Student Services, Mr. Steve Fortunato, Applied Engineering and Technology Teacher at the Senior High School, Attorney Michael Ozdenak, a parent in the district who resides and practices in Cranberry Township, and Mr. Scott Phelps, another parent in the district who is the Vice President of Technology with the Pittsburgh Steelers. Each of these individuals bring unique strengths that will no doubt add to the foundation's success and we're so thrilled that they'll be joining us. Finally, I'm most eager to share that we are forging ahead with our annual golf outing, the Gift of Hope Golf Classic, what we held on Thursday, August fifth, at Cranberry Highlands Golf Course. We're very, very hopeful that this year's event will return to somewhat of a normal day. But of course, we'll be following all CDC guidelines to ensure the safety of our guests. Registration will be opening by the end of the month and I invite everyone to be a part of this event. We're currently seeking sponsors, silent auction donations and encouraging the community, teachers, businesses to start organizing those foursomes. If interested, there's additional information in the foundation section of the district's website. There you'll find not just info about the golf outing, but also other initiatives we're involved in like Raider Crate, the student-led subscription box service, our sponsorship of the African-American Male Leadership Group at the IHS and how we are going to fund again, like we did in the fall, outdoor learning spaces at our elementary buildings. On that page, you'll also find ways to donate to our general fund. And if you'd like to stay current with all that we have going on, you can follow us on Twitter at SBSDFoundation. And with that, Mr. President, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Vitale and myself, I just wanted to thank you and the entire board as well as SV staff, families, residents and our local businesses for your generosity and continued support of the foundation. We all know that without your help, nothing- We all know that without your help, nothing, nothing that we do is possible, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Annie. I will look around to see if any board members have questions or comments. I, I just want to say that I am thrilled to get these updates. I remember when we established the foundation and what I thought it was going to be and, and what it is now. It just grown tremendously, helping families, helping, you know, the students is still is what we're doing. But we're not just doing it inside the, the walls of the, the, the schools, we're doing it in the community itself. It, it's amazing, and it's so helpful to, to those in the community that I never would have imagined that it could be this successful. I, I'm very proud to be a part of that. So thank you for all your hard work and getting us there, and I'm sure that we'll, we'll get a board foursome together for the golf outing. Although we won't be competitive, we'll still be there, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing that there's no question, other questions or comments, we'll move on to the COVID nineteen update, Dr. Vitale.
Thank you. So I would encourage you to continue to watch the Seneca Valley COVID dashboard, which is listed on our website under COVID nineteen. Currently, as of today, this has been updated. We have twenty-five active student cases across the school district out of approximately seven thousand four hundred children. We have zero staff cases since the vaccinations were offered. And any staff member, from teachers to bus drivers, to, you know, anyone that worked in the school system, was eligible to receive the J and J vaccine or other vaccine, if that's what they chose. We have seen a significant decline in staff cases, which is really great news. On the somewhat negative side, we have seen an uptick in COVID cases among children. And so we are concerned that we continue to watch that. The good news is that most of the children cases we've seen in working with our families through our school nurses have not been extensively serious with hospitalizations. We're not seeing that, so that is a good sign. But as the infectious disease experts warn us, we don't know what the long-term effects are on children. So we do still need to be careful. Children are not eligible for vaccines yet. I know the federal and state governments are working on this. To date, we've been told as of today that Pennsylvania is moving up the vaccinations. They are opening up all categories as of tomorrow, so that is really good news. And that would include children sixteen and older. And so I did put out a staff alert about this today. It is important to note there are some caveats about the vaccine for children, and I will focus on that. We are being, it has been shared with us that children are only permitted to receive sixteen and up the Pfizer vaccine. They are not permitted at this point to receive Moderna or Johnson and Johnson, simply because that has not been, the FDA has not been, they have not given an emergency authorization, usage authorization approval for children to receive the other ones, and that has to do with their clinical studies and their clinical trials. But it is important to note that children sixteen and seventeen, since they are minors, they will need a parent-written consent. The parent or guardian does not have to show up at the vaccination site, but they will need to have a form with them showing a parent or guardian's signature if they're sixteen or seventeen. We are not doing these on-site as we're not authorized to do so at this point. If we have students that are eighteen or nineteen possibly, and maybe some special needs students that could be twenty, they are permitted to show at a vaccine site, and they are permitted to receive any of the vaccines that are in our community and being distributed by providers. There are available appointments at the Butler Health System, at least there were today, I haven't looked this evening. There are available appointments at the Clarion site, but it's important to know Clarion Hospital has Moderna only. That has been shared with us, so if the child is sixteen or seventeen, they would not be able to go to the Clarion site. You don't have to be a resident of the county any longer, as long as you are a Pennsylvania resident. We were told today that Butler Health System in Butler has Pfizer, so that's important to note as well. Neither of those systems have the J and J vaccine at this point because they were initially reserved for educators or other essential workers. But as of tomorrow, all of those area providers will be opening to all categories, so that is a good sign. Unfortunately, Butler County reached its second week of substantial last Thursday. So the school district is back on that attestation form. We will not be moving back to a cohort model at this point. We will not be changing any of our instructional models, nor will we be recommending any changes. However, because we're on the attestation form, many things take place. But the most important too to remember as a board and as a public is that when children have their masks down, we must separate children six feet during lunch or during mask breaks. You may say, wait a minute, I thought it was three feet, that's confusing people. When the mask is down, the rule for Pennsylvania Department of Education and Pennsylvania Department of Health is six, still six feet regardless of whether or not a student and/or adult has been vaccinated. Most of the people in this room are two weeks past their vaccinations. We must still wear masks, we must still separate six feet when feasible in these meetings as well. And number one, because children aren't vaccinated. Number two, if the general public shows, as we saw many of them in the audience this evening, we don't know who's vaccinated. And we are being told by the infectious disease experts that, that they are very concerned about the variants, especially, especially this B one one seven. So we still need to be careful, we still need to be cognizant, we still need to mask and social distance. Also, under the attestation form, the recommended closure chart now becomes mandatory. And so if we have cases, that's why you want to follow this Seneca Valley dashboard closely, because you will see by way of example, once we go back into substantial two weeks in a row, you'll see this come back on our technology. Our computer programmers put the category called active cases counting towards a temporary closure. You'll see that back on our dashboard. When we're not in substantial, the closures are recommendations, and the cases tied to those closures, we pay close attention to. But once you're in substantial for two consecutive weeks as a county, the closures are required. We don't have a choice. The Pennsylvania Department of Education and the Pennsylvania Department of Health updated that closure, closure chart last week. They did not reduce the amount of cases per building and per size, but they did reduce the amount of days we would need to be closed. So that is good for us to try to keep schools open. But I do want parents to be aware that they need to watch this active cases counting towards temporary closures. For medium-sized buildings, when in substantial, if we have four to six cases that count towards a closure, we have to close two to three days, we don't have a choice. For cleaning, for contact tracing. If we have seven or more cases in a medium-sized building, as a refresher, a medium-sized building is any elementary in this school district based on student population, population. We would have to close seven or more COVID cases, that includes adults and students. We would have to close a minimum of five days. In a large-sized building, six to ten COVID cases, we would have to close two to three days, and eleven or more close five days. And so you may look at this dashboard and say, well, I'm confused, don't all the cases count towards a closure? Want to make sure that our public understands, some of those cases that we're counting could be students that haven't been in school for eight, ten days, and no contact tracing is needed. There was maybe a family case, so they kept the child home, then the child developed COVID. And so, and has been tested and has been verified as a positive case. So when the parent reports that to us, it goes on the dashboard. But because they weren't here during, you know, during the time they would have been infectious, we do not have to count them per Pennsylvania Department of Education towards a temporary closure. We still count them as a case. Also, they may have timed out, they might be past their fourteen days. And so that's why they would not count towards a temporary closure. So there, there are a lot of different scenarios we're looking at here. It's also interesting to note that we have some students that are high schoolers that work in healthcare settings. So they were vaccinated in one A or one B. And so people may say, well, I don't understand, why aren't they deemed, they were around a close contact, why don't they have to quarantine? Because a student up here may know that they were around them, but my child has to quarantine. That's because they've been vaccinated and they're past their two weeks of vaccination, and we can't share that. So I do want you to know that it, it's becoming even more work for our school nurses, they're doing a dynamic job. I know people are still frustrated, and this is still tough times to live in, but I am asking for parents once again, if your child is sick, keep them home. We don't know if they're allergies, and yes, it's likely their symptoms may be minor, they're a child. But again, every time this virus moves to another host, we are told it has a chance to mutate, that's what viruses do. So this really is, you know, I heard on the news this morning, I thought this was a great analogy. There are two train tracks, one is vaccinations and one is the variants. And we really are racing against these variants. We're doing very well as a school district because of all the mitigations we have in place, because students are cooperative, because for the most part, parents are cooperative, although we have had some angry ones about quarantines. But, you know, we have to follow the rules, we can't make our own. And while so many of us have now been vaccinated, we are still wearing masks because of the variants. We are reminded by the infectious disease expert that we work with at a Butler Hospital that the vaccination may be one hundred percent in avoiding death, but it is not one hundred percent in us not getting it. And so we do need to keep with social distancing and keep masking until we get as many people as possible vaccinated. So that is my COVID update. I want to thank our nurses, and I want to thank and ask for the cooperation of parents. Once again, if you're getting a test in your home, please do have your child livestream. It helps us with contact tracing, and it helps us when it comes to quarantine numbers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Ica, any questions or comments for Dr. Vitale? Hearing none, we will move on. This is, we have a small action agenda for our meeting today, so we'll start that. There is no one here for public comment, so we'll just go right past that. And I'm going to ask that we have a motion to approve the following. Resignations, appointments, leaves, retirements, memorandum of understandings, and sabbaticals, as provided your backup and discussed in executive session. Can I have a motion, please?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas, there's a second?
Second.
Mr. Hester?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Since this was personnel, now we discussed an executive session, we will go right to a vote. Lisa, if you call the vote, please.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Nicolai?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Wooderson?
Upstate.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. DeTooleo?
Yes.
Motion carries with eight voting in the affirmative and one abstention.
Thank you very much. That was our action agenda, so we'll go back to our work session. These are things that we'll be looking to approve next week. We'll look to approve the minutes of our work session meeting of March first, twenty twenty-one, and our regular meeting of March eighth, twenty twenty-one. Those are providing your backup. The treasurer's report that's in your backup, the general funds bill will look to approve the grand total of four million three hundred ninety-five thousand ninety-five dollars and sixty-three cents. That's in your backup, and construction fund bills in the amount of two million three hundred thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. Those are in your backup. If you have any questions, please direct those to Ms. Berger. Move on to administrative, administration action, Mr. Nicolai, please.
Yes, Mr. President, I, next week I will be seeking or making a motion with respect to the following items. And I apologize, I'm working off of the agenda that I received from the district's site, if this has been updated at all, I apologize. But the first is the Adelphi education agreement, to approve the agreement with Adelphi to provide alternative education services for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, that is detailed in our backup. The second is for our Kennywood picnic, to approve June twenty-fifth as the Kennywood picnic day for twenty twenty-one. The third is a number of board policies, and they are the following. Policy nine one seven point one, weapons new second and final reading. Policy two five two, dating violence new second and final reading. Policy nine zero four, public attendance at school events revised first reading. Policy nine eleven, broadcast of school events revised first reading. Policy two zero three, communicable diseases and immunization revised first reading. And policy eight two two, automated external defibrillator revised first reading as well, they are all detailed in the backup. And the last item, which is, we alluded to this earlier, we will be looking to have a discussion and potentially name the new K through six school in Cranberry Township with a name to be determined.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nicolai. Other than the last school name for the new K through six building, any questions or comments? Ms. Peterson?
If you permit me, just to back up a little bit to the construction fund bills. I think it's important to point out that buried in all of the documentation is a factoid informing us that there's an incredibly low number of change orders and the cost of those change orders. And I just think that is worthy of being, of pointing, of pointing out in our meeting tonight. And also thanking Mr. Miller for his, as a Jewish manager, for that large project, it is the Erman Road project.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, for pointing that out. It is amazing, you know, we kept that so under control. Any other questions or comments? This time on the school name, we can discuss it now if you, if you wish, we can wait till next week to, to put that in. I think this is something, we have all the information, it's kind of fresh in our minds, it might be something that we'd want to take up now that this, Gus. If anyone wants to start. Mr. Nicolai?
Sure. You know, I mean, I participated in the survey, and, you know, I would say that my top choice wasn't the one that got the most points. But I mean, I, I liked all of them, I did. You know, I just had a personal preference. I think that as we think about a name for this building, it's important to closely listen to and really hear a constituency. And so, I mean, the, the one name that's above and beyond the rest has the highest point total. And I, you know, even again, it wasn't my first choice, I think it's a good choice. I, my, my sense is that that's what I would support, which is the best representation I have of what our community is looking for.
Thank you, Ms. Nicolai, any others? Seeing none, I, I'll throw in my two cents, I, I do like the top choice as well, the, the Erman Crest. It sounds silly, but the acronym, the E C E and E C M would be able to continue on almost, you know, bringing some of that legacy from Evan City back and keeping it into the building. So I did really like that. I know it sounds silly from that standpoint, they were all great names, but that just sort of pushed that one over the top for me. So that's the one that, that I, you know, that really resonated with me is, is that top choice. And to Mr. Nicolai's point, the highest point getter is something that was also impressive from that standpoint. So, Dr. Vitale, would you, oh, I'm sorry. No, okay. Dr. Vitale, would you like us to take a?
It is up to the board, if you'd like to insert a name this evening, then we can have it on the agenda. You don't, you have the authority as the board to choose the name. We did the survey so that you could get a feel for, you know, what the community thought about it. That included parents, that included administrators. I personally liked a lot of the names, and kids had their hands in this. Students from Evan City picked a lot of these names, you, you got the writing in the backup with the survey, so did our community. So, you know, I, I liked a lot of them, I don't personally have a preference, I think they're all very good names. We spent a lot of months gathering feedback, and, but at the end of the day, you are the board members that have been elected by the public, so it is your decision.
Thank you very much. I'll just, I'd like to add, I'd forgotten, and I appreciate you raising it, the, the initials, the acronym. I know that when we made the decision to build on Erman Road as opposed to reconstructing Evan City, it was a pretty, you know, boisterous debate, debate, and as much as we can, you know, we talk about, you know, respecting and honoring the past. I mean, the Evan City building and the Evan City community have been part of our district. And I know in particular, at least several members of the administration that lead in Evan City also want to try and find ways to honor that. And so I, I would echo that as well, that I think that's a, a nice twist to it, to, to have the E C initials be part of a new builder.
Thank you very much. We'll incorporate that into the, the action agenda next week, and we'll finalize names then. Thank you. We'll move on to instruction action, Ms. Harrison, please.
Thank you. Next week, we'll be looking to approve the following. First is transition services agreement. Approve the transition services agreement between Seneca Valley School District and Cares of Western PA to provide services for one student for Mr. Miller and providing the backup. Second item is memorandum of understanding, approve the memorandum of understanding with the Education Support Professionals Association to allow adjusted work schedules during the instructional recess of the summer of twenty twenty-one is provided in the back. Third is the grant dispersals. Grant permission to apply for and disperse have approved the following. First is the Walmart Local Community Grant in the amount of five thousand for professional development of C V E staff utilizing the Leaders in Me's Seven Habits of Happy Kids platform. Program promotes a positive school environment by integrating leadership and the whole child approach into every function of the school. Continued training in this program will give C V E a path to the goal of increasing student achievement by providing students with a safe and positive environment for growth. Students who are versed in the leader in me will develop a skill set to overcome personal circumstances while also understanding the importance of interpersonal relationships and respecting others' wants and needs. Quested by Ms. Deanne Graham, Dr. Tina Francis and Ms. Annie Marzing is provided in the back. The next grant would be the Arconic Foundation Grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to host a Raiders Robotics Rally in the summer of twenty twenty-two, which will allow the S B first team. That's standing for for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. And SWEET, standing for Seneca's Women Engineering Exploration Team, to lead the community on an exciting adventure with hands-on activities and instruction to Java programming and a firsthand look at the worlds of the first Lego League and the first tech challenge team. Quested by Mr. Steve Fortunato and Ms. Annie Marzing is providing the backup. And third grant is the Highmark Foundation School Grant in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred dollars for Leader in Me, L I M four-one training for the staff at Conic Clonesing Valley Elementary School is provided in the back. Then other items would be to approve conferences. Approved conference requests is provided in the backup. And last would be senior high book disposal. Approved donation or disposal of books from the senior high school is provided in the backup.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we will move on to business and finance action. Mr. Jacobs, please.
Thank you. Six business finance actions for approval next week, all of which are included in the backup. First is budget transfers, approving the budget transfers. Second is change orders, approve the change order. The third item is an early intervention agreement. Approve the renewal agreement with the Midwestern Intermediate Unit Four for an early intervention classroom housed at Rowan Elementary for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Fourth item is bid awards. Award the following bids for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Copy of paper supplies, general supplies, maintenance supplies and print supplies. Fifth item is Josh Ship Presentation Agreement. Approve the speakers agreement for Josh Ship to present at Seneca Valley on October twentieth, twenty twenty-one. The event will focus on the key role that parents and all adults play in the future success of children. The cause will be shared with, the cause will be shared with the Butler Early Learning Council and Butler Area School District. And the final item is the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, P S B A Policy Maintenance Program and Participation Agreement. Approve the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two P S B A Policy Maintenance Program Participation Agreement.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, we are in receipt of nine pieces of communication. And a couple of things before we look for adjournment, I just wanted to point out that this is our first time that the nine of us on the board are together since March of twenty twenty. So the little bit of normalcy that's starting to creep back, you know, in society is starting to even come home to us as a board. So it's great to see everyone again in person, even though it's with masks on. Just, you know, it gives me hope. So I'm very happy to see all this. Is there any other item to be brought before the board? Hearing and seeing that, we are going to go back into executive session to discuss personnel and legal. Mr. Hoffman, do we have to adjourn this meeting or how do we do that, sir?
You can adjourn because we will not be returning this evening for any action.
Okay, then I would look for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I beat him out.
Mr. Nickel gets the the motion and the second would be Mr. Jacob. Oh, was that Mr. Wooderson? Sorry. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed nay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, folks. We're going to cease the live feed at this time.